May 21st, 2012 at 5:00 PM. Well, actually, it's about 5:10 PM. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Graham Mahia.
Here.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Protempo.
Present.
Mayor Edgar.
On his way. All right, at this point of our agenda is oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item on the agenda. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes. Do we have anyone from the audience that would like to speak? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the council and we'll go on to the special orders of the day. And that is review of fiscal year 2012, 2013 special revenue debt service capital improvement program and internal service funds proposed budgets. Yeah?
We're going to go straight to Finance Director Anita.
Good evening, council. This is our second budget study session for the fiscal year 1213 budget year. For tonight, we'd like to start off with a brief overview of our first meeting. And our first meeting discussed the general fund in great detail. And the general fund operating budget is balanced for fiscal year 1213. Economic growth is projected with a 4.6 percent increase in sales tax revenue. However, the overall revenue picture remains fairly flat with only 0.8 percent increase estimated in overall revenues. On the expenditure side, a 2.4 percent increase in operating expenditures is projected. And this is mainly due to employee agreements while staffing levels have remained the same. The city's general fund reserve remains healthy with $7.4 million in reserves. And the fund balance designations are slated to be expended on the city's general plan update, business and residential improvement program, and the community spending priorities program during fiscal year 1213. With that, this night's agenda will be taking a look at the city's special revenue funds, the debt service fund, internal services funds, capital project funds. And we'll go over the capital project carryovers and propose new capital projects for fiscal year 1213. Okay, we'll get started with special revenue funds. And these are accounts set up to account for the proceeds of special revenue sources that are restricted or committed for specific purposes. So these might be grants. They're just restricted in use. They can't be used for regular operating expenditures. We have several funds in this category and we'll go through them one by one in the next several slides. We'll start with the Community Development Block Grant. This is funding that the city receives through HUD through the county of Orange. Here in Los Alamos, we utilize this funding for ADA ramps, which is an example shown in the picture. In the current fiscal year, we had a grant, a CBPG grant for ramps, and next fiscal year we'll have a similar grant. $146,000 is projected in revenues for next fiscal year. From the current year's grant, we will have $8,000 remaining that will be carried over for a total of $154,000 in grant expenditures for ADA ramps next fiscal year. Gas tax. This is funding that the city receives on a per capita basis pursuant to the California Streets and Highway Code Sections 2105, 2106, 2107, and 2107.5. This fund also accounts for our traffic congestion relief funding. And it is all only to be utilized for street improvements and street maintenance. A portion of this funding is transferred to the general fund to offset the cost of street lighting and of the street division. And the remainder is spent on capital improvement projects, which we will discuss later in the presentation specifically which ones are gas tax funded. The Public Safety Augmentation Fund. This accounts for the half cent sales tax that the city receives pursuant to Proposition 172. And it is transferred to the general fund to offset the cost of police services. $84,000 is projected for next fiscal year and $84,000 will be transferred to the general fund. Slas, this is our supplemental law enforcement services fund. And we utilize this funding for our motor officer position. We receive $100,000 annually and we transfer this also to the general fund to offset the cost of the motor officer position. Air quality. Under section, under AB 2766, the city receives funding from the air quality management district. And this is to be utilized for anything that would reduce emissions. So proposed for next fiscal year for 1213 is the replacement of a police department pool vehicle and the replacement of the recreation truck. The city receives about $14,000 annually and the fund currently has a balance of $81,000. The two vehicles total, each is $43,000 for a total of $86,000 in proposed expenditures in this fund. Measure M. We receive local turnback funding from OCTA, which is derived from a voter-approved initiative. The city utilizes this fund for street improvement capital projects as seen in the picture here. $185,000 is the revenue projected for next year and proposed expenditures for capital improvements total $696,000. And we'll go through those in detail when we get to the capital project section. Asset seizure. This is funding that is derived through seizure of drug-related assets by the police department. And expenditures are restricted to law enforcement operations. The fund has an available beginning balance of $57,000. It's only projected to earn interest for next fiscal year. And proposed expenditures total $46,000 and they're detailed on this next slide. Recommended expenditures include body cameras for our police officers, rifles, police department electronics and digital evidence, as well as furniture for the report writing room, which was originally budgeted in the current fiscal year. So we're requesting to have that carried over for completion next fiscal year. Again, for a total of $46,200. Los Alamos Television Fund. This fund was established upon the dissolution of the Los Alamos Television Corporation. The funds are derived from peg fees that the city receives. And it is utilized to promote and develop local usage of cable television through the LATV station, Channel 3. $36,700 in projected revenues and proposed expenditures equal that. The Office of Traffic Safety. This is a grant that the city receives for DUI enforcement grants, for DUI enforcement checkpoints that the police department holds. This fund also accounts for a 30-day impound, vehicle impound fee that also goes along with the DUI program. $15,000 in revenues is projected for the fund and $15,000 in expenditures, of which $5,000 pertain to the DUI grant and the other $10,000 are derived from the impound fees. The $10,000 are transferred to the general fund to offset the police department's costs pertaining to the program. Proposition 1B. This is new funding for this year. The city has applied for this grant just within the last couple of weeks. This is the State and Local Partnership Program Grant. And the county has allocated $20 million in Proposition 1B to Orange County cities. And the funding is to be spent on rehabilitation, reconstruction, and construction projects that can be ready to advertise for construction by December 31st of 2012. So our share was $318,000 and this is what we have applied for. And proposed projects include Humboldt Street Rehabilitation, Las Vaqueros Circle Rehab, and Reagan Street Rehab. And staff recommends to establish a new fund to account for this new grant for fiscal year 1213. Moving on to debt service. Debt service funds here in Los Alamos, we have one. They are used to account for and report resources that are restricted for the expenditure on principal and interest. So we have the One Debt Service Fund, our Laurel Park Debt Service. And this accounts for the Certificates of Participation Series 2006 that were issued back in May 2006 for the purchase of Laurel Park. Interest on the bonds is payable semi-annually in September and March and principal payments are payable annually in September. The fund has a beginning balance of $260,000. This is actually cash with fiscal agent. That was part of the original bond agreement when the bonds were originally issued. Revenues for the fund consist of a transfer in from the general fund and proposed expenditures, again, is the principal and interest for the year, for next year, which amount to $214,000. Okay, moving on to our internal service funds. Our internal service funds are used to account for financing of goods and services that are provided by one department within the city to other departments on a cost reimbursement basis. Here in Los Alamos, we have two internal service funds, the Garage Fund and the Technology Replacement Fund. The Garage Fund accounts for citywide vehicle acquisition and maintenance. Revenues are received from internal departments based on the number of vehicles that each department has and cover the cost of maintenance and operating costs. Also, typically, a vehicle replacement fee would be collected. However, this fee has been suspended the past three years now and it's recommended to be suspended again for next fiscal year due to budgetary constraints. So with that, the fund is projecting $250,000 in revenues from department charges and proposed expenditures total $471,000, which are detailed on this next slide. $250 are operating expenditures, so you can see those are revenue offset. An additional $221,000 in recommended vehicle and equipment replacement are recommended for next fiscal year. And these include three police patrol vehicles, one detective unit, two public works aeroboard signal trucks, a mulching mower for the public works department, and a enclosed trailer for the recreation department, for a total of $221,000. Okay, so we've done a little bit of analysis on this fund. These funds have been the source of a lot of discussion over the last several years. And basically, they have three components. They have an operation and maintenance component, a vehicle replacement component, and a contingency reserve. So the graph that we've put together here shows the performance of these three aspects of the fund all in one place. So in blue, we show the operating and maintenance component, and we can see that over the years that's been fairly steady. A small increase is projected for next fiscal year and that's associated with the rising gas costs. The green component, that's the contingency reserve. And that, we estimate, the cost of about three vehicles. Basically, it's an emergency contingency. So if we were to, if there was to be an accident or something to happen with a vehicle that was not part of the replacement schedule for that year, then we would have that contingency to draw from to still have a full fleet. And the last component is in red, which is the vehicle replacement reserve. And we can see that over the last several years, this component has declined. During fiscal year '09, '10, and '10, '11, there were no vehicle purchases either one of those two years. However, during both those years, the fund, we were able to transfer funds from the Garage Fund back to the general fund to help with financial strains in the general fund during those two years through the economic downturn at that time. Then in fiscal year 1112 and 1213, well, 1112, we did have some vehicle purchases and we are proposing additional purchases for fiscal year 1213. And with that, Toni Brandyberry, our Public Works Superintendent, is here to help shed some more light on the operations of this fund.
Thank you, Anita. Even though recent fleet replacement purchases have caused the balance for vehicle replacements to dwindle down, there is a positive note to this. As of three years ago, the fleet was 60% older vehicles. And these are vehicles that are over 10 years old, usually have high mileage. And we had 40% newer vehicles. After the proposed purchases of 1213 have been completed, the fleet will be 70% new vehicles and 30% older. Also, out of that 30% of older vehicles, 10% of those vehicles are what we consider special-use vehicles, which have a longer life expectancy, such as your alternative-fueled vehicles, compressed natural gas, et cetera, and don't require the replacement as often as a gasoline-fueled vehicle. The result, the outlook of the city's fleet is pretty good. The concern is, the fund is depleted and the anticipated replacements for the next five years do include four police vehicles, which would be one patrol vehicle, one detective, one administrative, and one motorcycle, two public work trucks, and in fiscal year 2016, '17, the routine replacement of four to six police patrol vehicles will be expected.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Moving on to our Technology Replacement Fund. This is also an internal service fund and it was created to provide for ongoing technology upgrades and replacements. The recommended expenditures for fiscal year 1213 include $146,000 in operating expenditures and $27,000 in capital equipment purchases, which include $12,000 in replacement computers and software and online class registration integrated with schedule for the recreation department for $15,000. So with that, the projected revenues, which are also derived from charges to the department, total $146,000 and proposed expenditures total $173,000. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Cassandra Palmer, our Support Services Manager, to provide you with an overview of our information technology.
Thanks, Anita. First, I'd like to start by giving you a little background about our technology fund. The fund is used for maintenance as well as some of our major projects. It provides a mechanism to extrapolate costs, providing a more accurate operational cost allocation for each department and then the services that they provide. In the past, it was used to purchase our new finance software. And hopefully, in the future, it'll provide the funding for our new phone system. On the left side of this slide, you'll see several of our accomplishments for fiscal year 2011, '12. I think the year is best defined by the change in our approach from one of maintenance to a more proactive implementation of technology to improve our efficiency and save money. During the past year, with our newly-formed steering committee, we hired Cyentia, assessed our infrastructure, and mitigated several system vulnerabilities. Then we began to look for ways to reduce redundancies, such as consolidating the Time Warner access points throughout the city, which alone is going to save us more than $1,300 a year. Then we looked for ways to reduce some of our costs and increase productivity. And that was by automating some of our projects, such as PD Assist and the Wireless Video Upload Project. Now, if you look to the right side of the slide for fiscal year 2012, '13, you'll see that we plan to continue in this direction. We'll start by bringing early this summer our Strategic IT Implementation Plan, so you'll be able to see the process by which we vet projects before even bringing them to you for your consideration. It'll be things like balancing priorities between our departments, fiscal responsibility, evaluating necessity, and an overall cost-benefit analysis. Some of the projects you'll see on this slide address issues such as eliminating wires and cables that you'll see running across the floor often in here, which are kind of a safety hazard. Others will explore the potential for a future cost savings, such as replacing our antiquated phone system. We're going to look at things like VoIP, which has a potential to save some money. I don't want to say for sure that's the direction we're going because we haven't done the analysis yet, but that'll be part of the upcoming year. And some of our projects will even create an opportunity to generate revenue, such as the integration of the class registration with the class schedule on our new website. And anyone who stood in line for any of our swim classes will appreciate the benefits that'll come with that project. We expect our enrollment to increase once that's implemented. In fact, some of the other cities that have implemented that type of registration have seen an increase in their class registration and corresponding revenue by as much as 13% with the implementation of that technology. We generally look at our benefits of technology in terms of soft cost savings and improved productivity. But the potential to actually generate revenue is really pretty unique. So with that, unless you have any questions, I'll turn it back to Anita. Thanks.
Okay. So to bring it back together on our internal service funds, these funds both operate very similarly in that there's charges to the departments and that's how the funds generate their revenues. However, they're different in some respects also in that, like the vehicle fund, they have a defined number of vehicles. And in fact, over the last several years with dwindling staff, Toni's been able to realize some efficiencies with combined uses. While on the IT fund, with ever-changing technology, it would behoove us to be prepared for what the future might bring in that respect. So with that, it's recommended to resume departmental vehicle replacement contributions in fiscal year 1314 and also to fund technology replacement and future technology enhancements for fiscal 1314. And moving on to our capital project funds. These funds are used to report financial resources that are restricted to capital outlay, which include the acquisition of capital facilities as well as other capital assets. The city of Los Alamos has five capital project funds, and we'll discuss them in the next several slides. Starting with the Residential Streets and Alley's Fund. This fund derived its original funding from the general fund through monies designated for future improvements of residential streets. The fund currently has a beginning balance of $55,000 and it's projected to only earn interest and no expenditures are proposed for fiscal year 1213 at this time. Next, we have the Building Improvement Fund, which also originated its funding from the general fund through monies that were designated for proposed projects at the Civic Center. It has a beginning balance of $136,000 with also only interest as a revenue and proposed expenditures total $128,000 and include City Hall Complex facility repairs, community center rehabilitation, and museum roof repairs. The Park Development Fund. This fund receives its revenue from developer impact fees. Since the city is basically built out, we haven't seen much revenue in this fund in recent years. This fund was utilized in the current year to do the remodel, the Laurel Park renovation that's pictured down in the corner. So it's a perfect example of a fund that was utilized for its designated purpose. The Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Fund. It's funding that's dedicated to the preservation of urban open space and habitat in Los Angeles and Orange County. Back in 2010 and '11, the city was awarded $1.4 million grant for the Coyote Creek Improvement Project, which is anticipated to get on its way and be completed next fiscal year. So we show $1.36 million in projected revenues and expenditures in this fund. And the Traffic Improvement Fund receives its funding from traffic mitigation and developer development fees. It has a beginning balance of $402,000 and only interest revenues projected in the fund. Proposed expenditures total $230,000 and we'll discuss those in the next few slides. Okay, that brings us to our capital project carryovers. And these are projects that were budgeted originally in the current fiscal year and are either on their way or about to get started in the summer construction season. And so the funding is necessary to be carried over into the next fiscal year to complete the projects. And these include Corporate Center Drive and Cali Lee Reconstruction, ADA Access Ramps for $8,000, the Business Area Streets Improvement for $190,000, the Highland Neighborhood Signals for $28,000, Coyote Creek Improvement Project at $1.36 million, and City Hall Fencing for $13,000. Okay, moving on to the new proposed projects for fiscal year 1213. These include the Arterial and Residential Tree Program for a total of $35,000, the Street Marking and Striping Program for $10,000, concrete repairs for $40,000, residential street improvements for $300,000, street sign replacement at $20,000. Miscellaneous crosswalk improvements for $10,000, ADA ramps for a total of $175,000, the Unfinished Priority One Street Calming Project for $15,000, Humboldt Street Rehab for $150,000, Las Vaqueros at $60,000, Reagan Street Rehabilitation for $50,000, two bus shelters still unfunded currently with a cost projected at $15,000, museum roof repairs for $50,000, City Hall Complex facility repairs $25,000, community center rehabilitation $40,000, and Orville Lewis Park basketball court renovations $20,000. And this one is also currently still unfunded. Okay, and we have some projects at the pool facility, which are funded through the general fund pool designation, which include the installation of ADA accessibility lift at $17,000, the auto lift valve for $5,000, lighting repairs and upgrades $30,000 estimated, deck repairs $50,000, and overflow skimmers and drain replacement of $5,000. So that concludes our presentation for tonight, and we'd be more than glad to take any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. We'll ask, see if there's any questions here, then I'll open it up for a public discussion here in a moment. Anybody want to go first? Councilmember Kusamoto.
Thank you, Mayor. So Anita, on page six on the gas tax, when you have projected revenues.
Yes.
325, 273. How's that compare to prior years? Are we seeing more or less?
We actually get these figures straight from the state. And their projection is slightly less this year, which is surprising to me with gas prices increasing, but that is their projection.
Okay. And then the other one is on the capital, if you go back a page or two, maybe it's a question for David. On the Via, no, Via El Mercado, the street over there, has that been already, one of the CIP, you know, that road over there?
Yes, that is, that project started construction this week.
Thank you.
Part of the five and one.
Okay, so that's already been covered, so we don't need to worry. Okay, thank you. That was my question. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Who'd like to go next?
I will.
Okay. Mayor Protempo.
All right. I'm not...
I'm not, I've just got some questions, not specifically to any one thing, but they just, we've talked, at one time, we had an SRO officer at the high school, and I know that there's been talk about us, you know, when we had the lean years, we had to do away with that position. And we were talking about pursuing Seal Beach and Orange County because those children from Rossmore and from Seal Beach go to school there also to see if there could be some maybe one-third, one-third type thing. Has there been any talk about that, or has that kind of fallen off the radar screen?
It's on the radar, but we haven't done any talking in the last four and a half months.
Okay, okay. But we're still looking into that. And what fund would that be from?
General Fund.
General Fund.
Just from the general fund? It wouldn't be from one of the police funds? Okay. I was hoping that there was a police fund that was specific for that kind of thing. All right. The garage fund, you're recommending that it be enhanced in the future, and could you just expound on that a little bit? How much each year, where it's, what fund, where it would come, from the general fund, from a specific thing to, you know, what are we looking at here?
Certainly. In the past, the way this was done was each department would be charged based on their number of vehicles and their replacement schedule. And what we were thinking about doing is coming up with an average approach so that it wouldn't hit each department all at once. So what we're working on currently is putting together, we have a schedule of the vehicles that reside in the fund, and stretching that out over the expected life of each vehicle and taking an average. And so that's what would be transferred to the fund annually is this average.
Okay.
So that each department, the impact on each department wouldn't vary so drastically from year to year.
Okay. And do we have any kind of figures on what that would be a year yet?
We're looking around $100,000 a year, but it's not completely solid yet.
Yeah, okay.
And again, we'll be discussing that through the budget process next fiscal year because we're not recommending that at this time.
For this fiscal year, correct.
Right.
And we're, as Tony said, we're okay this coming fiscal year.
Right.
We're in pretty good shape. All right. And I know that at one point, we had a residential street plan for street repairs. Where are we on that plan? Have all the streets been repaired?
We are finishing up the last year with this year's budget. We are going to be finishing up this summer, the streets in Old Town West and East on that. And then with the money left over, we'll hit Old and New Dutch Haven, and that should wrap up the residential streets for the whole cycle. And we'll start doing more minor repairs to do some slurry seals in the other streets to keep the life of the street going.
So as I recall, the goal for that, that, I think it was a seven-year plan, as I recall, something like that, was that we could get, bring the level of all of the streets, residential streets in the community, up to a grade where then in the future, it would just be repair and more or less maintenance, correct?
That is correct. If you take care of them every, with a slurry seal every seven years or so, you can keep the life expectancy of the streets for many, many years.
Okay, so then in the next budget, you would be recommending a specific amount of money to go into that fund to keep that going.
Well, yeah, with Measure M money and the gas tax money, we can use that, you know, that has dropped down some, as we talked about before. It's a good timing on that for us finishing up the residential because then it would cost less to do more of the routine maintenance.
Okay, all right. And this is just kind of a comment about the tree program. I know that there's a lot of residents that do not have a tree in their parkway, and I know some of them don't want them, but I think the goal of our city was to, you know, really make sure that we do have trees on each one of the street, residential streets especially. But there is a tree that was on, in the median, just east of Lexington on Cotella, there was a very, very serious car accident there, and it went right in and knocked out one of the trees. And so there's that dead space there, and so we have nicely spaced trees and then this dead space, so maybe we could fill that in with something would be good. And then the online class registration, and by the way, I went on the website, and it's fabulous, but I wasn't able to click on to the tennis, the tennis application, it didn't come up, but I know there's new things that are, you know, bugs that have to be out. But the goal here, from what I'm hearing and from what I read here, is that we would have the capability soon to register for our park and rec classes and that thing online, correct?
Yes, that's the intent of the software, and what it would do is actually integrate with the class schedule.
Yes.
Right now, all of that's done manually.
Right.
And although people can register for things online, it's not a very user-friendly process because it's not integrated with the schedule. If they make mistakes, which they frequently indicate a wrong number because they're not clicking on what they want, they're entering everything.
And am I right that they really can't pay for it online, correct?
There's a way that they can pay for it, but it's very complicated. We're trying to streamline all of that. We're looking at a couple of different options, and we're going to go with an option that best serves the purposes that we need, but is also the most cost-efficient.
Right.
So right now, we're not sure, we're still checking into a couple of different possibilities.
But that will be something, as you said, that probably would make it a lot easier for people to sign up for things and maybe bring a little bit more money in for them, but also the convenience to the community. Okay, I've got, I know I'll have more questions, but for right now, that's.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
All right. I'm going to go to the first page. It says economic growth is projected with a 4.6% increase in sales tax revenue. Then you say, however, revenues remain flat at basically 0.8% increase estimated. How do we come up with those figures?
This was just a summary from the previous meeting, and so basically 4.6 was the sales tax revenue projection, and it's based on both discussions with our consultant as well as trends that we've seen over the current fiscal year, economic forecasts. So that's how we arrive at that figure. And then the overall, the 0.8 overall increase.
Right.
Is taking account, taking into account all the city's revenues.
All right.
So not just specific to one funding source.
All the cities in Orange County or?
No, 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 just us. This is just us.
Oh, all the city right here is.
Right, all of Los Alamos revenues.
All right, very good. Then I want to go on to page 11, and it's going to be slide number 21. Whenever we do the technology replacement, is that going to have a further impact on the building fund? When we're changing out cables or anything else? Or will that be figured into it? Anybody?
I can answer that for you. Right now, we are projecting possibly in the next fiscal year, not this coming fiscal year that we're working on the budget for, replacing our phone system. And when we do that, the phone lines that we have have been here since the building was built, and most of them are disintegrating, so we would have to rewire, but the rewiring and re-cabling of the buildings is included in that amount.
Very good.
We've got some very rough estimates in there right now, kind of as placeholders for the project.
Yeah, and that was one of my concerns is I know some of that system too that should be ripping out, and I'm going, my gosh, you know, it's got to have an impact somewhere. So if it's figured into the original budget?
It's figured into the budget for that. You know, if we end up going with a voiceover IP, then we'll probably put in Cat 6 cable and run it through at that time. If we go with a different option, then we'll be putting in, you know, phone lines. It's just going to depend on which is the most cost-effective and has the potential for saving money long-term.
All right.
So we're going to bring all of that back to you. If we end up doing voiceover IP, it'll be a staged implementation process. The first thing we'll do probably is get an RFP for the wiring at that point, after we do an analysis and let you know what the potential savings will be after we implement the project. And then we'll bring it back later and go forward with an RFP for the project itself. So it'll probably bridge over a couple of fiscal years, and we'd probably ask for the allocation or appropriation of the funds at that time from the technology fund.
All right, thank you. Next question is going to be on slide 21, and it goes to Tony. Tony, you'd mentioned that we write, in fact, I'm trying to figure out, are we right now at 70% new vehicles and 30% old?
No, right now, after we would make the purchases, the proposed purchases for next fiscal year, then we would be at 70% new.
Okay. And where do we stand right now approximately?
Right now, we're at about 60%.
Are we 60?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Next question goes to... Actually, I think I'm okay now. I think Marilyn answered a couple, and Warren answered one of the other ones, too. One last one, I guess. It's on page 15, slide 29. On the rivers and mountains conservancy monies, do we have to spend all the money? I noticed that it's going to be $1,440,000, and our proposed expenditure is $1,360,000. Is there any kind of rule or regulation that says we have to spend all that money? And I know Mayor Edgar has been working on that, so he can probably answer that one closer.
There's no rule that says you have to spend it all, but we really don't have that money yet. It's a forecast for a bond payment to us, and to be honest, we've propped up the biggest number we could substantiate so that we can get the most money and have the discretion to manage it internally to a budget. That includes risk assessment, that in case the project ran into some complications, we would be able to overcome that and not have to go back for round two.
All right. And the way it stands right now, since you just left one of the meetings, is it looking still good?
We just got the appropriations moved past June, so that was good.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mejia.
Thank you, Mayor. On page nine, slide 17, Anita, do you have the balance remaining on what we owe on the park?
Yes, actually I do. That is 3.11 million currently.
Okay, thank you. And I guess this is a question for all of the departments. I know that just a few years back, we set aside $250,000 for the upgrade of technology, and it seems like we're continuing to spend a great deal of money, and I know technology changes over time. But is there any estimated time where we're looking at these big projects not being needed to be done, so we're not spending as much? Much like the streets, we've done the overhaul, now all we have to do is maintain them. Are we looking at a time in the near future where we're not spending this kind of money on technology, where the big projects will be done?
Well, I'll give you my view of that and then have Cassie weigh in. When we did a staff run-through today, this morning, and we talked about the technology fund versus the garage fund, the garage fund's needs are contracting because we have fewer staff, fewer vehicles, really. And even though we need to replace those, you know, as you know how that goes, technology, on the other hand, doesn't seem to be contracting, you know? It's just the world we live in. So the challenge for us is to make the best purchases for the most efficiencies for the staff that we have to operate the technology, but also to serve the public in the most efficient way. So it's really hard to answer your question. Obviously, we need to conduct city business, be efficient about that, but also serve the public. And with the reductions in staff that we've taken over the last number of years due to the recession, we're feeling that now, and we're kind of grasping at anything that will create efficiencies. So Cassie, you have any, want to add to that?
No, other than that, you know, it's really hard to say where technology is going because it is changing so fast, and in order to stay in business, you have to grow with that. So there will be a constant evolution. We've had some really big projects. Most of our projects will not be of that scale. In fact, when we bring our strategic plan forward, you'll see how we're evaluating, you know, what criteria it meets. Is it going to improve our service to the community? Because that's one of our priorities. And we also are going to be looking at things like people who are not technically savvy in the community versus those people who don't want to have to talk to a person, don't want to have to do anything that they can't do on their computer or on their phone or electronic device.
Right.
So we're really trying to address all of our customers and serve them in a way with technology that probably doesn't completely exist. Also, along those same lines, each of the departments has specific things that they're required to do. There's mandates, there's things that are needed in their field so that they can be efficient and do things. I want to call them mandates or things like that, you know? A lot of police reporting, because that's what I'm most familiar with. It has to be done online now. A lot of things are automated that didn't used to be automated. And we're required by law to do these reports in that format, so every time one of these comes through, it requires implementing some new form of technology. Same in the other departments.
I guess what I'd like to say is I want us to be mindful that while we've set aside money to kind of bring the city up to speed, I know that we were, you know, at a deficit a few years back. I don't want us to say, looking forward, well, we're always going to keep this fund at this level. This fund was set up to bring us up to speed and then maintain, much like I just said with the streets. So if there's a way we could get, you know, when you're ready, the list of the big projects that we're looking at, Angie, so that we can have an idea of where we might see some, you know, light at the end of the tunnel, I think that would be advantageous for us as council members, so that we, as we go forward with the budgeting, we know if there's a little bit more flexibility to use some of these funds somewhere else because we don't need them for technology. And then if we could go to page 14 on slide 28. I take issue with this because, and for those of you who don't have it in front of you, it's the park development. And this money set aside to provide, and I'll read for you, this fund was established to account for acquisitions, construction, and repairs to existing city parks. We have Orville Lewis Park, which we just put up a new fence, and that was for safety reasons because coyotes were able to tunnel under and also holes in the fence, it was just in desperate need of being repaired. But we also talked about taking care of the basketball courts there. And I think that it's illogical to me that we would provide a safe area for the kids to play, and yet we don't give them the kind of tools that they need to play there. It seems silly to me. You've got $8,841 in the park fund. That could be used for the Orville Lewis Park, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to ask the council to consider possibly shifting that money over for the use of the Orville Lewis Park upgrades to their basketball courts. I'd like to see the parks being addressed and a stand taken of how we're going, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, but not this piecemeal kind of thing. I know with Laurel Park, we were able to do it all at once, and I know that's a very big expenditure, but with this, this seems something small, we could address it, and then that park's ready to go, and it's a place where the people in that community would want to go and have a good time with their families. So we have about $165,000 left in the technology fund. Is that money possible, any of that money, can that be moved back to the general fund? I know it's a line item set aside, but we say at the end of this fiscal year, excuse me, let me see if I can find the page. Here it is, page 11. Beginning balance, $192-plus, projected revenue is $146, expenditure is $173 with an ending balance of $165,800. If it's possible for just a little bit of that money that's going to be sitting there until we come up with new projects for the next year, if we could take some of that money and move it to the general fund and have that address the rest of Orville Lewis, I don't mean to pick on that fund at all, but it just seems like that's something that we can, moving forward in the next budget, make sure that we replace that money.
Can I answer?
Yeah.
The money that's remaining there, at least the majority of it, is set aside for our phone system.
Okay.
Our current phone system is past its end of life by several years.
Okay.
And we were waiting, we brought this item forward several years ago, and the funding was. wasn't there to move forward with replacing our system. But it's to a point where it's really critical, but because it's such a big project, we can't do it overnight. And if the money is gone, I suppose we could come back and ask for, you know, another appropriation, but it's something that we need to address very soon. There's a possibility our phone system could go down at any day.
Okay.
It's that critical at this point? Things, you know, there's holes in the software now that that can't be upgraded. There's no maintenance or support for the back end of it anymore, because it's past its life expectancy.
Well, we certainly don't want to miss with public safety. That's not my intention, but what I'm saying is, there seems to be money sitting in some of these funds that isn't going to be used right away, so maybe we can look at, as a council overall, finding that money somewhere else within the fund. I know you guys have cut back on things, and even a little bit of staff has been cut back. From what I'm told, there's no other cuts that can be made, so I think this project needs to be addressed, and I'd like to see that if the council so chooses. And another question. Now that we're at the end of our seven-year street improvement project, is the money that's used for that able to be used for sidewalks? Anyone?
When it's tied into a street project, it can be used for sidewalks, yes, as part of the...
So, we can't have a comprehensive plan to address the sidewalks, because they're a big issue in this community. You have a lot of uneven sidewalks. I know there's different things that we can do. I know there's the shaving down, which is a temporary thing, but I'm wondering, does this have to be used simultaneously along with the street improvement? And if so, how extensive would the street improvement need to be in order for this money to be used to address the sidewalks?
Technically, you could put it toward sidewalks, but in, I'm just saying, in the past, and what the OCTA wants, and typically traffic and gas funds, is related to a transportation type of process. I mean, so there's some wiggle room in there.
Okay.
I mean, it just depends on how you word it, but if you go through, I'm going to do an area-wide sidewalk project by itself with anything else, you might get some, you know, questions that could come back to you on just that, that it's not necessarily true. It's one form of transportation, but not what the intent of the gas tax and the transportation fund's for.
Okay. If there's something we could do to look into that, I think it's definitely something that needs to be addressed throughout the community. There are safety issues, and we do risk potential litigation if someone were to hurt themselves. So I would like to see how far we could go with that, Dave, without it not meeting the threshold of what the measure of money is for.
Yeah, we did bump up the sidewalk fund this year to kind of cover more, we're up to like 40,000, is that correct, for that?
Yeah, but if you walk the city, I think there's numerous places where, and don't get me wrong, Tony does a great job of making sure that they're as safe as they can be, but that's one of the things that I've heard from people as I've walked and knocked, that they would like to see something done, especially in their own neighborhoods, obviously, because they're directly impacted from it. So, if we could do that, I'd like to find out exactly what we would be allowed to do. And with that, Mayor, I'll go ahead and pass it back to you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I have a couple items that I wanted to go through. First of all, in the proposed capital improvement projects, the 1.2 million, if we can just call that up, up there really quick.
What page is that, please?
Let's see. I'm looking at the actual handout that we got attachment for, but let's see where it is in the presentation. Starting on page 32 or 16 of the handout. So there's a couple items on there that we haven't really resolved yet, which are unfunded items. So we have two items up there, the bus shelters and the Orville Lewis basketball court. And, you know, I thought I would just start there, because I, two things that the council discretionarily came forward and said, hey, we really want to do something. Mayor Pro Tempo focused on the buses benches, and we were supportive, and we've also been focused with Jerry on the Orville Lewis Park. There is $20,000 set aside there. You know, we talked a little bit just a moment ago, Jerry mentioned the technology fund of 150-plus thousand, but really, what we're talking about here is about $20,000. There's also, we've been trying to get a portion of, well, different funding for some of the different parks by some of the other projects, like the one that we were doing with the River Rock project with the canal behind Old Dutch there, where we were going to be using the staging area as the park and do some resurfacing in that park there after we used it for an area to stage up a bunch of stuff we were going to pull out of that ditch. But very specifically, just to kind of bring some closure to this, you know, the council is supportive of the Orville Lewis basketball court renovation. This is the place that we need to talk about it, and so we should just look up above into the projects that are there and just decide, you know, collectively, when you look at those projects that build up 1.22 million, we're, you know, we're talking about $32,000 worth of projects unfunded. I think what we need to do here is actually make some proposals on either allocating money away from projects that are specifically in the CIP for right now, and I'm going to put forward kind of two things to just think about, and then if we can't do that, then we, you know, we can also look at the communications or the telecommunications money that's in the IT replacement fund or into the reserves. But, you know, we have a couple different projects in there, and so if you look at that, the Humboldt Street rehabilitation, we had about $125,000 out there. You know, again, we are taking on a really big project over there in the business area to kind of get the corporate drive and the Calley reconstruction done, and maybe if we balance that a little bit with some of the residential focus, there's 125,000. Again, we need 32. Can that project be scoped or delayed for a year that we could actually look at that as a potential funding source for those two projects that we, as a council, had deemed a priority? David, probably more directed towards yourself.
Well, the Humboldt Drive, Los Pecados, Reagan Street, and Choritos Avenue from last year are all part of my 1B funded project, where we do a 50-50 match between Measure M and the 1B. So, they were looking for transportation projects, and another reason why we put those together is that we did, we spent all this money on the residential streets, and the business streets and stuff were falling apart, and these were all streets that are designated as very poor and conditioned out there from the recent payment management report we did. With the 1B money that we set aside, we said we would do, like, say, the 50% match. They want a commitment from us to get it designed ready by the end of 2012, to be able to go out to bid, and then six months after that, and then have it constructed within a two-and-a-half to three-year period after that. So, part of getting the extra $318,000 is to commit that we're going to do this project in that timeframe. So for us to change that, we potentially could lose the $318,000.
Yeah, no, and so just a little bit from a finance perspective, the project wouldn't actually consume the funds for almost two years, and we have the money in reserves today to back it. So my question would be, would that be money, I mean, if we commit that we will actually match, which we will, the issue is, are we going to consume it this current year? It's going to be next year, if somebody's going to be sitting up here, it's going to be a carryover project for this last year, again. And I'm saying, is it possible that we would consume to actually fix the basketball courts with current year monies, reallocating the CIP monies, knowing that you can back our match or, you know, our commitment with other funding?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We will most likely carry over at least probably $200,000 of the total, I'd say, of 636,000. If we put out to bid in the first quarter of next year and get it started construction, it will carry over into the summertime, but to be done by August, so which would end to your next year. So you could have that, because we get Measure M money every year, and it could be part of that.
Okay. The other project that you have on here is the residential street improvement, so it looks like those and Humboldt are kind of one package, one funding source.
But the one thing I want to point out is the Measure M money that we're committing on those projects is just set aside for those types of streets.
Okay, so let me ask another...
It can't be used for, it can't be used for a basketball court, the Measure M money.
Okay, so from a staff perspective, if the council said, hey, our priority is to look at these two other CIP projects, non-street-related, you guys definitely know the funding sources of the do's and don'ts. Why don't you give me an idea from your perspective, what, yeah, which one of these projects would be most susceptible to be elective, to be sacrificed?
Okay, what do you want sacrificed?
You're the technical guy, you know the funding sources. Tell us which projects of all the 2012 and 13 capital improvement projects, if we needed 32,000, what is the project that we potentially could go to?
I think the question is, what are the revenue sources that are wide enough to support these two projects?
Right.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, the traffic improvement fund that we have could be used for, like, the bus shelters, and we have, I think we have a budget left in the traffic improvement fund that is not designated for anything. That money cannot be used for a basketball court or anything like that, because at least on the bus shelters, you can say it's related to the street projects that are out in there.
Okay, so if we did that, that would cover the bus shelters. And then if you took Jerry's idea of the park replacement fund, which, on a side note, I'll go completely with her on that one, but I swear, and it's probably not going to happen this year again, but that funding, there's nothing that funds that anymore, because we don't have any more, and I really wish, I'm not going to reopen it one more time, but I wish that we can spend that money, and then maybe as a compromise, get rid of that fund, and then from the future, fund or budget at the general fund level, so we have less special funds, especially ones that don't get revenue. There's nobody else doing development in the city.
Would you like to explain, Anita, what Quimby funds, the definition of the Quimby fund?
Yes. Okay. The park development fund does receive developer impact fees, and so those are specifically designated to just park improvement projects, and they are to be accounted for in a special fund. So we can't just close that out into the general fund.
Okay.
We can, however, we do have two other funds that were originally funded through general fund transfers. They are the residential street and alleys fund and the building improvement fund. Both these funds got their original funding through a general fund transfer. So we can look at either one of these two and transfer the remaining balance that would be necessary to complete that project.
Yeah, I don't want to sidetrack. So there's 8,700 out there, we could put it towards the courts. Yeah, we definitely would be supportive of that, and now we're still a little bit short, but I think we could find some money there. But the, from the service funds, you know, part of my objective personally has been really to try and get rid of as many of the ones that we couldn't. I understand for the development fund, we can't do that, but again, I don't want to derail the budget to try and attack one of these two, but that's something I'm very interested in.
And you want to describe the other fund?
Well, both the building and the...
You said there are two funds that were originally funded by the general fund. Those are the, in my mind, the only funds that could be used for this basketball court save the community give-back funds or the reserve.
That's correct, and they are the residential streets and alleys and the building improvement fund.
Okay.
Those are the two.
So, because the county is funding street improvements, not only through Measure M, but through Prop 1B now, it might make sense, you know, if we're looking for extra money to spend on other projects, to take the residential street and alley fund and potentially use some of that. Now, you know, again, it was set aside from the general fund, so it could be transferred anywhere.
So there's a good option, and again, I'm just putting it on the table, I'm supportive of where we're at with this, and then when we go back through another round after we get public comment, that's an option we can talk through. The other items that I had is the 2011-12 carryover projects. So there's one project that, I just want to make sure I'm clear before I ask this question, the Highland Neighborhood Signals, has that, that's not been done, correct?
That has not been done. Our traffic engineer, Hartzell and Crable, is designing those improvements right now. They had a delay, it was last year's CIP budget. The design will be complete, but we won't have the construction spent in time. It'll be spent during the summer.
Okay, so this is programmed to be done in this, in our next year's budget coming up? Because I didn't see it in the CIP projects for 2012-13.
It was programmed last year, and it just hasn't been completed yet.
Okay. So color of money, you're keeping it in there as a previous year carryover?
Yes.
Okay, good. Excellent, thank you. Okay, and then the garage fund? Yeah, I spent a lot of time outside of council with Angie and Anita to go through a little bit, so if we go to page 21, or slide 21, page 11. Anita, the one part, I'm completely there, this is a beautiful chart, by the way, so the blue is forecastable, so it's something that we can kind of see, there's not a lot of magic to it, it's there, and it, every year, we can kind of say we're spending a certain amount per year. And then the red, you know, if you start looking at that story, you're thinking, God, we're depleting buying stuff, but, you know, we're actually spending money on stuff, we're just not replenishing the fund, and that fund, again, is a tax that we tax on all the departments. So something that this council has been kind of pressing for, and we've spent a lot of time outside of this, was to establish the policy for the tax. I'm unclear in the recommendation whether we are going to establish a specific financial or fiscal policy for the tax, or whether we've just agreed that we are directionally developing a business practice to plan for it. How formal are we going towards this business policy or this fiscal policy?
We're in the process of developing a policy. Tony has done a lot of the legwork on it already. And again, we're not recommending funding of it this current fiscal year. However, we are recommending that we look at it through the budget process next year for '13-'14, and at that time, determine which direction to go.
Okay. So just a point of clarity to the public, we are consuming garage fund expenditures, or we're making expenditures, buying the equipment that's in the, in the equipment list, the capital equipment list that's actually in the budget. We're just not replenishing it by taxing the other departments. And eventually, a lot of people in the community would look at that and say, you know, eventually that will catch up to us. We also know, just as a point of history, that this has been a fund that's been probably misused a lot over the years, and I think that that policy will be really important to get in place. So I think what you're saying, then, is this next year, we should have a fiscal policy in place for that. The park and the $3.1 million Laurel Park Fund. Again, just a reminder to the community, last year, we actually pulled the paperwork for the park, and just so people are aware, every single council member up here, not just one, we've always been very focused on this because it's such a, it's the big, it's the only debt the city has. And I think last year, I can't even remember who, but we brought it up and said, hey, look, let's look at the financing for this. It was on kind of a 30-year rotating funds. The community just needs to know is, the reason we're opting to not look at this when it's so obvious there's low interest rates, is we looked at last year when they were the same, and we determined that there was no way possible to pay off without early payment penalties, that if you added those to the refinancing costs, it didn't pan out financially. And so that's just a reminder for last year.
Mayor, wasn't that in the first 10 years we weren't allowed to do that?
That's correct.
Like 2016-17 is that year for the option? And then, you know, so there's been two projects that have been advocated for up here, you know, you've got the Orville Lewis Basketball Court, basketball courts, and then we've got the bus shelter. You know, the one thing, though, that I think, just Cassie, to send a clear message, I think, back to you, and if it's unclear, it'll get clarified hopefully one more time up here, is the technology fund, the phone system. We did say we really do want to invest into making sure that the city hall was modernized. There's an item coming up on the agenda a little bit later that talks about modernization. This is a theme that this council has definitely taken on. I think Jerry was going through trying to look creatively at money we haven't spent and focusing on things first versus people, but I just want to kind of recommend and balance that, and I think Jerry's there, too, is that we really understand the phone investment, and we really know that that's something that we need to plan for. And public safety, I think if you just take away, it's not just calling up for your Parks and Rec class, it's the police phone, it's everything. We know how important that is, and hopefully through this discussion, we'll give you clarity, but hopefully you'll stay on that track for the telephone system. Those were pretty much my comments. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to the public and then bring it back for another round here with the council. Let me open up for public comment. Anybody in the public have any comments that they would like to add to this discussion? Okay, Richard Murphy, gosh, you know, I'm going to have to ask you. I mean, this is, this is twice now, my friend. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close it. We're going to bring it back. And Mayor Protempo, I know you've waited patiently, thank you.
Well, and, and my, I did go to my number five there, was the bus shelter and the Orville Lewis Park. And so I, from my standpoint, I saw they were unfunded and how much it was. So I would like to hear what the staff recommendation was how we fund that. And I guess I've kind of heard some of it here, but we just established this building improvement fund, correct?
No.
No, is, this is not the, the fund that-
No, the residential-
Oh, this is not the, okay. I'm sorry. I was, I was thinking, gee, we just established it, now we're going to take money away from it. I don't think that's a good idea. So you're saying that, that, well, you tell us, where do you think that this, these two things should be funded from?
Well, I, I think it's a, I think there are three ideas-
Okay.
-that have surfaced. One is the general funded funds, Residential Street and Alley and Building Improvement, those two funds were established originally from the general fund.
Right.
So, and that totals about, oh, say, $63,000. It's, it's not a huge amount of money, but it, it would work. That is number one option.
Uh huh.
And that could take care of both projects. Number two option would be to put these items on the list for the $358,000 community give-back-
Enhancement.
Enhancement. That's number two option. Number three option would be to take money out of the reserves.
The first option is those two funds and the Laurel Park Fund, or the, I'm sorry, the Park Development Fund.
Oh, Park Development Fund, yes. You're, you're right. You're right. That has a small balance.
Dave also said the traffic-
The street funds could be used for the bus shelters, so-
The traffic-
Yeah, there's a, there's a traffic improvement fund.
So I mean, I think we found our money for that, and it would be from an appropriate fund.
Yeah, but I do want to make one comment. On the, the Street and Alley Fund, last year, one of the CIP project was to design the rest of the alleys that we have undone in the, in the city for $50,000. And we are about 70% complete on that. So there's 70% of that $50,000 have been spent, just that you haven't received an invoice yet to see that.
Okay.
That's not, that's already accounted for in the current fiscal year.
It is?
Yeah. So I'd be concerned if it wasn't.
Can I weigh in on that?
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarification.
We walk the alleys with speed humps, and I really think that if we're going to be, as he said, improving the alleys, they all need to be done. Because there are some that are absolutely horrible-
Right.
And then there are some that are new and concrete. And, and one thing I'd like us to look at, because Dave and I talked about this, they went through and they replaced the sides that were asphalt and didn't replace the centered, like, reservoir place. And you see many of those breaking and cracking and sinking down. I think that to get rid of that, Marilyn, I'm sorry to jump in on your, your thing, but to get rid of that fund, I would be remiss if I didn't at least mention to you that I think we still need it.
Well, and, and I also am concerned about the alleys. We've spent an awful lot of time, over the whole time that I've been on the council, we have been, alleys have been one of the priorities. And we've been fortunate to be able to get CBDG funds to do that. So, and I, I believe that the majority of the alleys have been, of those funds have come from, of the repairs and the rebuild of them have, have come from CBDG grants. So we're going to continue to, to request that, correct?
Yes.
So, and I, I believe I'm correct, that the tendency is that they, they do want to continue funding projects that are restarted and see them get completed. So for us to be able to finish these alleys that aren't finished, we've got, we've got a good place where we might be able to get the money to do that.
Right.
But I agree, I don't think that we need, that we should be depleting that. It seems like we're hearing, though, that there's a couple of different places where we could take maybe a little from here and a little from there, right? So that we can come up. And I, I kind of hate to go to the, the community designated-
Right.
But we could as a last resort. But I, I think if we can fund the Orville Lewis basketball by not doing that, I think that'd be the best thing.
So Marilyn, just, because I'm going to work this through every person up here. So it sounds like your recommendation, no, I just want to make sure, I think what you're saying is that you'd be supportive of the bus shelters being paid for potentially by a portion of the fund, even though it's a small amount, but there is a replenishment mechanism. And then for the park, for the Orville Lewis Park basketball courts, the, the recreation fund or the Park Development Fund-
Right.
Plus-
That plus.
Plus another funding source, either from reserves or from the community fund, consuming maybe 8,000 or 9,000 of the 350,000 plus is what you're, is what's on the table from your side.
Well, if, if we didn't have to go to that community fund, it would be good, but, but let's go back here a minute. Now, didn't you say that the, that the bus shelters could be taken from the-
Traffic.
Residential and street fund?
No, the traffic improvement fund.
The traffic improve, okay. So that, the bus shelter's kind of taken care of.
Okay.
So we're now looking at trying to fund Orville Lewis and, you know, wherever we can, I'm supportive of wherever we can get it, and preferably not from the set aside we have for the community.
Okay, thank you. Who, go ahead.
I'm sorry. If I may add, if I may get, take everyone over to attachment four, which is the proposed capital improvement projects. The most flexible funding for what you're speaking of right now are the three items under the Building Improvement Fund. Museum roof repairs, City Hall complex, facility repairs, and community center rehabilitation.
That's, that's what I was looking at.
Those three items are the most flexible for what you propose to do in the area of Orville Lewis Park. By whittling down some of these funds a little bit, adding the Park Improvement Fund, I think you can challenge that to get you where you need to be.
Okay.
Okay, so I think so far that's the direction we're probably going to be heading. Go ahead, Jerry.
I appreciate that, Stephen, because I was looking at the museum roof repair, which absolutely we'll want to do. That's, you know, a historical building for us here in the community. But I just have a hard time wrapping my head around $50,000 for a roof. So there might be a little bit of money there. So I, I was going down that same path, and that's in my notes. Also, if we could bring this up at this point, you know, I've mentioned, not only we've had the issue with the timing over at the Rossmore Highlands for the lights, we also have a problem over on Lexington and Catella, which is a street that's got far more traffic going down it. And I've repeatedly brought it up from the dais, but it doesn't seem to be getting any traction. And again, pulling up today, running late, coming from somewhere, hit some traffic, trying to get home for the meeting, and I'm sitting at the light, there's no traffic coming down from the opposing side, and I'm sitting in the left-hand turn lane, just sitting there, just sitting, 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 sitting. I'm not the only one that's brought this up, and I'd like to see if we couldn't get it addressed.
Any comments on that?
Well, OC TA is in the middle of re-timing the entire Catella Avenue. Matter of fact, this month, they're out there switching panels over, and some of the times it's going into some manual modes and it's not quite synchronized yet. If it's by the end of May, it's supposed to be all synchronized and all working, and they claim a 25% faster rate of going through the, on Catella.
Can't, I'm sorry.
But our, our traffic engineers are working with the OC TA consultants and their staff and going through a bunch of issues on the, on the signals and all that. So they're kind of in the middle right now of, of testing and getting things online, and they're, they're not quite working as efficiently as what they said, but they're working on it.
Okay. Will you bring to their attention also, since they're addressing that whole corridor there, at Walker and Catella, sometimes both sets of lights are red and no one's moving.
Okay, I will do.
Okay, and Marilyn, I appreciate that. I, I would like to not take the money from the give-back because we have some really good ideas that are coming forward that we need that money for. And I would like to say that I do support keeping the residential street improvement because we're going to need to do improvements over time. It just won't need the same kind of funding that we've been putting into it at this point. And really, other than that, I have no other comments.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kusamoto?
Oh, thank you. Just one question on the technology. So what is the, Anita, what is the generally accepted practice of depreciating technology assets? Is it like a seven-year depreciation cycle or is it shorter?
It depends on what they are.
Okay, because I think to Cassie's point, you know, looking, looking down the road, whatever you have will probably be obsolete faster than it is now. So I think you have to kind of be mindful of that, keeping the infrastructure here. But, I'm sorry, your answer is?
It depends on the type of asset. So typical computers and things like that might be three to four years, whereas printers might last longer than that, five to seven. So it just depends on the asset and what its expectant life is projected to be.
What about like major systems, like the, well, software goes obsolete, it's no longer supported, companies go out of business. And so something that we bought a few years ago that may not be supportable in two years. So we have to look at those kind of things, too.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Great. Councilmember Stevens?
I'm going to jump back on something that Councilmember Mejia said, and it's about that same intersection, because I go through it, too. And one of the problems is, at 7 o'clock, you finally get a chance to make a left turn there. But prior to 7 o'clock, this is to turn left onto, onto Lexington, prior to that, again, it's, it's, I'm wondering if they timed that anticipating more traffic because of the 405, 605 construction, and because it's not happening, you know, right there, because you will sit there for two, three minutes? And not have any traffic through. So if you could, whenever they do come out and reassess it, specifically, you know, make that known there. And again, that services the military base there, too. And so, because our soldiers and anyone on the base can't go straight through on Lexington, they're finding alternate ways, and the alternate way is to come down and make the left turn into the base. I, I'm going to go along with whatever funding you find out of some of these other categories to be able to do Orville Lewis Park. And I also like the idea of the bus benches being done because that seems to have been an issue for many years. You know, I remember it being brought up, I think, seven or eight years ago, and maybe it's time to get it one and done. And so if the, the funding for that has to come out of the Traffic Improvement Fund temporarily, then I would go along with that also.
Great. So as we put a kind of close to this, just as a summary, I think that we've accepted most of the recommendations. I think that we have one specific on the action, and I'm going to ask for a motion on this. But I think to frame the motion, the motion is to basically fund the bus shelters with Traffic Improvement Fund for 15,400, and then to also fund the basketball courts at Orville Lewis Park from the Building Improvement Fund, a combination of that and the Park Development Fund, for a total of $20,000. And just look for a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Because it's a financial roll call, or do we just go ahead and go with the standard motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham Mejia?
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor Protempo?
Aye.
Mayor Edgar?
Aye. All right, thank you. Okay. That was Special Orders of the Day. It's, it looks that, based on this agenda, that we have a closed session coming up, conference with legal counsel. City manager, is that still on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, great. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and break off into closed session, and we realize we're running kind of tight up against a 7 o'clock start, so we'll break off, we'll come back in and finish the meeting up. Thank you.